And here comes.
All right, good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our Commissioner status update meeting.
...
Today's date is September 23, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I suggest we move item six to right after item one.
Any concern with that?
None.
Okay, we'll do that. Any other changes?
No.
Hearing none. A public comment. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody on the telephone? Hearing none. We'll move into our first business item. This is a request to use county property for the Breakthrough T-1D Bike Ride Aid Station on September 27, 2025. It's an action item, and we have Chuck Hodge here. If you could go ahead and just tell us a little bit about what is happening.
Absolutely. And first, I want to thank you and the staff for putting this on the agenda so quickly last week. Here representing Breakthrough T-1D, the organization was known as Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation up until last year. This is our second year doing a rod in the Coeur d'Alene area. It's a major fundraiser for diabetes research, starting Coeur d'Alene and work our way up toward Bayview and back. Our route does go around Hayden Lake. We have about 90 participants this year. We had several hundred last year, and about half of those will go around the lake. Last year, we had a section of private property we used for this aid station and is unfortunately not available for us. We've been scrambling a little to find somewhere and did find the pullout on Hayden Lake. We will be looking at hopefully utilizing that between about 8:30 and 10:30 this Saturday. Be relatively low impact use of the property. We'd like to put a few portlets there, water station, and we'll expect to see just a few rodders pulling into that, refueling, and continuing around the lake and up to Bayview and back. Our promise to you is we'll keep that, make that cleaner than we found it if we're allowed to use it. And any other questions, happy to answer for you all.
Thank you. Questions? No? Well, I think, I think the board would be pleased to have you use it and even more pleased that you leave it better the way you find it, so.
That's the way we like to operate.
Yeah. So with that said, it is an action item, so I guess we should make a motion on that.
Sure. I move that we allow Breakthrough T-1D Bike Ride to host their aid station on county property on Saturday, September 27.
So be it.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Very much.
And good luck. Hopefully you have a successful fundraiser.
Thank you. Weatherworks good, so.
Yeah.
Love it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're actually going to do item six. This is a lawsuit update. It's an executive session, and I'll take a motion to enter into it.
Move that we enter into executive session pursuant to IDO Code 742061F.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matari?
Aye.
Okay, it's 10:36. I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
We had two items in executive session and I will make two separate motions. The first one, I move we exit executive session per the community development item with staff to proceed as discussed.
Second.
Commissioner Aldine.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Torrey.
Aye.
And the second, I move that we approve the additional interest payment for the cities out of contingency and the highway districts out of fund balance.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Torrey.
Aye, and that is master plan fund balance.
Yes.
Okay, so on to item number two, opioid settlement update. It's a discussion item and Jalina Hildreth.
Good morning. Jalina Hildreth with the Auditor's Office. We have a couple of items to discuss regarding opioid. One of them, a couple meetings ago, Bruce, I think you specifically had wanted us to come back during a status update to discuss training. We had talked about, we had come before you, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, asking about sending someone.
Law enforcement training, yes.
And I think Leslie was the one that asked if we could maybe have someone come and we were going to see how that training went and see if we wanted, well, they didn't have enough participants, so it got canceled. But Andrea has been working with the training gal out at the sheriff's office to get some more information and it does sound like they're willing to come for a pretty reasonable price and I think, what is it, like sixty five?
Sixty five hundred.
And they'll do up to a hundred people if their facility will facilitate that. So we could offer it to other agencies at the same time and I mean sixty five hundred dollars is really reasonable. So is there anything else you wanted to tell them or you guys have any questions regarding that at least?
Questions?
It's not, I don't think we have a, do we have a date set or anything?
I don't have a date set because I didn't want to get a date until I knew that it was okay to proceed forward with it.
And then the other thing that we had mentioned, which I don't know if that's something you guys want to even do, is charging other municipals to attend or, you know, I mean, we have over a million dollars in opioid funds that we haven't used and we're burning through less than ten thousand a month out at the jail. So these kinds of things are good for us to be able to use that money. So, I mean, I don't know if we would want to charge it. I was also even thinking, and I hadn't discussed it with you, but maybe even doing like a multiple day one where that way the majority of our sheriff's office would be able to attend because, you know, hopefully they're not working that day, but I don't know if that's an option, but.
I will have to talk to Ally because she's been in touch with.
Yeah, but we kind of wanted to just give you an update and see if that's something that you're okay with, with us moving forward and kind of trying to get things worked out.
Thoughts?
I like the idea and I like the idea of multiple days because I know EMS does that for all their paramedics. They'll have trainings on two or three days so people can get that. It's not general fund tax dollars, so I don't really have a preference to charge people, especially since we're, you know, trying to use these funds and I don't, I don't know why tax dollars would have to be used when this is settlement funds.
Right, and they are pretty sticky on how we can use it, so if it qualifies and it does, I think we should go for it, but.
Commissioner Eberlein?
I'm wondering, what's the, what's the value of it? What comes out of the program?
Well, I have the agenda. I mean, I'm not law enforcement, but.
I mean, just because it's free money, it doesn't tell.
Oh, no, we have the money and we have to use it for specific things that are opioid related and this is a class that teaches the officers how to handle opioids.
Yeah.
How to the safety tactics and gives them, you know, community engagement. It explains it all in the.
When you say community, what does that mean?
Community engagement, so how to teach, it's kind of like you have the DARE program and that's in the schools, but how you can, how local leadership can have discussions with the community about the opioids, the problems that opioids cause.
Essentially, our participants become the trainers to the public.
And it also helps them know how to deal with, in situations that they, you know, attend to, you know, with just people that are involved in the opioids, but also the bystanders and, you know, in those kinds of situations, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and there's been a number of situations. One in particular was on video of an officer who was going through a suspect's belongings and apparently there was enough fentanyl residue on there that he actually collapsed and I think they had to give him two doses of Norkan or Narcan to bring him back, who was going to kill him. So I think the training is addressing, you know, the proper procedures when you're around people who have, you know, fentanyl and opioids and then, of course, on the community side, you know, every parent's worst nightmare is to have their kid, you know, fall subject to that and not know what to do.
Right.
Is this anything that Stan, your office, might want to attend?
Certainly, we can have somebody attend. I'm sure getting more interested people.
No, you can't, she can't hear you.
We have the boxes, you know, we have the red boxes in our office because we have members of the public coming in. We have victims, witnesses, and quite frankly, sometimes our victims and witnesses are former or future defendants sometimes and who knows what they bring into the office.
Yeah, so maybe we can add that to them to the list, especially if you get a two or three day block of time, so, yeah. Thank you.
So we're good then to proceed with, Mark, are you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing that we wanted to discuss was we've just been presented with two new opioid settlements that they want us to partake in and we have no amounts, so, I mean, we have no idea how much we're going to be receiving. One is from Purdue and the other is Alvegen, Amneal, I'm not even going to read the whole fam, the whole family there. So it's, we're becoming, this afternoon, one of them has to be done by September 30th. So at the business meeting, we're going to come before you on it, but I kind of just wanted to briefly discuss it. At this point, I don't want to be discouraging of it, but we already have over a million dollars that we can't use and it is, it's an audit nightmare, honestly, these settlements are because they have to be tracked separately. I mean, it really is. I just, I don't know if you guys, if we really want to continue to buy into these when we can't even spend what we have. So I'm just throwing that out there. Ultimately, it's your decision, but I mean, like I said, we already have over a million dollars that we're struggling to use.
How come it's so difficult?
Because they're very stringent on what we can use it for. We can't even use it for testing or, I mean, it's, the appendix A is what we can use it for and it's just.
So the lawsuit against the manufacturers made it very, very narrow on what the funds can be used for, so.
Can use it to collect interest?
I don't think it says anything about that in appendix A.
I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, we are collecting interest, but the thing of it is, is that it's like a thirty year settlement. So we get a hundred thousand this year for one, sixty thousand this year for one and then next year. So I mean, it's just a constant thing and the way our audit is, is we have to recognize that income early and so it's one of those things that we have to track separately and it's been this whole thing and we're doing it. I mean, I'm not complaining, but I'm just saying we keep adding to it, which is just stretching us out further. I mean, you know, if you guys want to do that, that's totally okay. It's just that they're so stringent on what we can use it on. We are really struggling unless we wanted to hire an opioid person to literally go out and try to do classes and, I mean, the other agencies are struggling to use it too and General Health won't even take our money because they can't use it. I mean, they're struggling as well.
Unless we had the ability to like make a program.
Right.
Or like a rehabilitation program, I mean, that's kind of really what appendix A really focuses on, which, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother realm of kind of what the opioid funds really pushes for.
But then you're growing. But then you're growing government, so.
It's, I don't think it's appropriate for our county to involve, you know, to be engaged in that. But I just wonder if there's outside, you know, places that will do this.
I don't, we met with Panhandle Health like a couple of years, or a year ago. And they, they, they loved the idea of partnering with us, but they wanted us to hire the people and us to do that and to have a program. And they literally, they get their money and they are granting it out to people like, for instance, Coeur d'Alene, city of Coeur d'Alene, they have a opioid task force. They get some of their funding from Panhandle Health, because they can't even spend it.
Well, can we grant the money out to places like that?
We can, but I don't know what that all entails.
I don't know what that would look like.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, I don't know that there is even any one, I mean, other than the small little task force that, you know, Coeur d'Alene has. I don't know if anyone else, I mean, we could get with Panhandle Health and see who they're granting it to, but.
And when we get ideas for the opioid settlement fund, we send it over to the AG's office, who overlooks all of the opioid settlement funds, and we are consistently denied.
Okay.
That we say that, 'cause it's, the appendix A is so gray, that we say, we think that these could fit into these categories. But what it comes down to is that if it is not specifically opioid-related, then you would have to, like, percentage it out. So, like, if there was a class that entailed all drugs and ten percent of it was opioid-related, you can spend opioid, ten percent of the opioid funds to bring in that class. That's kind of why this class was, like, kind of exciting, because the whole entire class is all about opioids. So, you can spend the full amount with opioid funds. But everything that we get, we have run through the AG's office, and we are consistently denied.
I would like to take a look at that appendix, just to understand it. Look, the fact of the matter is, you know, they contributed towards a hundred thousand people dying a year from this stuff, especially people who had just normal pain. Legally, they were being prescribed this stuff, and then they get hooked on it, under the promise that you couldn't get hooked on it. And, so.
Yeah, we tried to, actually, at one point, the coroner was wanting some equipment to be able to test, so that at the crime scenes, they would know the strain or whatever, so that they could, you know, that would give them a lead to possibly who was providing it. Rejected. I mean, it, it, they're very, very stringent, unless we just choose to go rogue and.
Well, let me, let me rephrase that. The AG's office doesn't give you a yes or a no. They give you, well, this could possibly work, or this could possibly not. But they consistently say, we are not the deciding factor. If you choose to spend that money, that's fine. But if, I guess, the settlements, what they're doing is they're going back to counties and they're looking through what the counties are spending money on. And then, if they don't feel that it goes back to appendix A, they're requesting the money to be returned.
Who's "they"?
The settlement companies.
Yeah, which I don't, I don't understand how they have the authority, but I'm not, but yes, I've heard, I, we've received multiple things about that.
Yeah, this is a feature. This is a feature of the entire litigation.
Apparently.
I'd like to take a look at the appendix, and we should have another discussion.
So, and that's totally fine. We'll forward, she can forward you the appendix.
To all the commissioners.
Okay, yeah. But this afternoon, we do have one settlement that you guys need to decide on whether or not you want to take it or not.
So, the Purdue settlement is due by September thirtieth, and the second settlement is due by, I think, October eighth, to be able to sign the documentation.
So, my only concern is, right now, we're using it, you know, ten thousand dollars a month for the jail. I just don't really wanna run out of that. It'd be nice to have.
Yeah.
For thirty years.
So, right now, we have a million, and I, I would say just a snidge over a million. But we receive money every three, three, yeah, quarter.
I think it's quarter.
So, I mean, we're, we're receiving, I would say, and I could look, but over three hundred grand a year.
Okay, so, so we're gonna be safe with them?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're spending, we're receiving more than we're spending.
Okay.
Every year. That's why we have that balance.
I don't have a problem opting out of these two settlements coming up.
Well, how do we know the settlements are gonna have the same restrictions?
It, they're all, it's all an umbrella.
It's all under the opioid, National Opioid Fund, and it's all, except for one settlement, which has its own portal. The rest of the settlements are all governed by the AG's office and are under their own portal, which are all governed by appendix A.
And you can go out to the National Opioid Settlement website, and you'll be able to see a list of all of the different settlements. And you can click in there and view all of their individual things. This is one of those that's out there under that umbrella.
This is going to almost every county in the country, right?
I, I don't, we could look, I don't know who is opting in or who's opted out.
Well, but it seems like others are doing this, right? I mean, we should at least figure out who's doing this and getting away with it. Real quick, just, you know, when it comes to, it's like the old saying, when you apply for a job, let the place that you're applying for say no. Don't say no before you apply, right? And, you know, the AG's office seems to take a very conservative, cautious approach. But they're not saying yes, and they're not saying no. So, then the question is, what are other people doing successfully that we might be able to implement? As opposed to us just saying, well, you know, this is kind of a burden, and we're not spending the money, so we shouldn't bother doing it. That's the part that I have a little bit of a tough time accepting. And if the board wants to say, ah, screw it, you know, let's not do it, that's fine. But, you know, we do have a lot of opioid problems in this community. I think District One is seeing opioid deaths double every year, right? And so, it is a problem. And taxpayers are paying for this.
Right.
Anyhow, I would like to see it. The appendix.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else up here?
Nope.
Thank you. Okay, on to item three, request to extend temporary staffing by two weeks, human resources. It's a discussion item, and Cecilia Sweet.
This is an update of the financials. Okay, for the record, Cecilia Sweet, Inram, HR Director. Commissioners, I have placed this on the business meeting as well. So, at the July third HR meeting, HR requested temporary staffing for up to twelve weeks. And that twelve weeks ends this Friday. And so, I initially requested two additional weeks to add a buffer, because our current temporary staffing is basically ending before our employees are getting back. Yesterday, I received an update that one of the leaves of absence has been extended to October twenty-seventh. And also, yesterday, I received one of the HR employees has turned in their notice, and their last day is Friday. And so, I'm coming before the board to make a request to extend it four weeks, to at least get us through the one employee coming back full-time. And then, we'll start the process of replacing our other employees. So, some changes since I originally posted this for the status update.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, just, you're asking for four weeks now, correct?
Yes.
And I think Stan's office, since you're kinda under that umbrella, there's plenty of salary savings to get us through the end of this year, and then potentially through. And then, with your person leaving, there might be some salary savings there. I just wanna make sure we're covered, but I, we're already down one person right now, and that's 'cause we have a temporary person. The temporary person goes away, we're down two, but now we're gonna be down three with the recent resignation.
Yes.
Okay, so, I, I would be in favor of extending this temporary staffing until you at least get stable and are only down one position.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Eberlein.
There you go. You have direction.
Okay, so, we'll vote on it this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item four, helicopter lease and insurance update. It's a discussion item, and Commissioner Duncan, you're listed on here.
Yes, so, we got the first quote back. It is high, and we're working on some changes to bring it down, although I don't really see how it's going to be brought down enough. So, it is between forty-six and fifty-three thousand dollars a year. And again, that amount could go down with some of the changes that we're making. So, that would just be, Lieutenant Ellis wants to kind, come up and add anything.
No, as Commissioner Duncan said, it seems extremely high. I know the first year that we had complete full coverage for it, it was twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So, that's kind of more, you know, what an ideal would be. My question for the board is, do you need to cover the whole insurance? Reason being is, the sheriff's office, or the county's not gonna own the helicopter. The nonprofit has said that if there was a catastrophic damage to the helicopter, it would be scrapped. They wouldn't try to replace it. So, that's where I think more of just the liability insurance makes more sense, but that's, we'll get it up to the board.
And, and that's one of the changes that we're looking at asking them to do. And especially because I think the hull is overinsured anyway, so if we can insure it for less. But I believe that legal counsel recommends that we insure the hull for something. So, that's what we'll, that's what we're still working on. But I don't know if Lieutenant Ellis, if the mechanism for donations would be willing to cover this. Let's say we get it down to, you know, thirty-five, forty thousand. Is that something that, that would be?
I don't believe so. No, that's half their operating budget per year, so I think their cap is gonna be ten thousand.
Okay. So, if, if the insurance comes back at over ten thousand, then I guess we're not gonna have a program. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'd have to agree with.
Okay.
Okay, so, let me just make sure I understand this. This insurance quote is for the county to pay, but possibly the, is it a nonprofit?
It is.
Okay. Might be willing to pick up some or all. It just really depends on where that final number is.
The talk of it, since they already paid for their, their own insurance policy, they don't wanna pay for another insurance policy that's for the county. But they're willing to forego the ten thousand dollars that the county is paying to the nonprofit every year, so the county can pay for insurance.
Just out of curiosity, how can we insure for a hull that we don't own? That's like insuring for your car, your personal car, right? We don't own your personal car.
A hundred percent agree with you.
What's that?
I, I a hundred percent agree with you. That's what I'm trying to figure out, why the county even needs to cover the hull. I don't see a reason behind that. It's like me insuring my patrol car right now.
Which attorneys recommended this? Is this outside counsel or internally?
Both, both outside and internally. But we can have that discussion. I think it has to do with, because it is a, what is the term that they call it? It's, it borderlines that charter service, because we're the only ones using it. So, but yeah, we, we can delve into that further. Again, I just wanted to get something in front of us as soon as possible, because it's been a whole year since the helicopter's been down. So, now, we can go back and fine-tune things, but it sounds like that the county could put the ten thousand dollars that we historically have used for a helicopter program. We could put it towards insurance, and then if the board decided they wanted to cover additional insurance, they could do that. But right now, it, it looks like if it's out of our price range, then the program goes away.
Okay.
So, we'll keep working on that, and hopefully, now that we have a baseline, we can make changes fairly quickly.
All right, Commissioner Eberlein, any thoughts?
Nope.
Anything you wanna add? Okay. All right, anything else on that? No? All right, thank you. Well, that leaves us item five. This is related to a job vacancy. I don't know if anyone wants to go into executive. I, I would like to on this one. And so, I guess we could go into public comment.
Well, I, unless you have somebody in mind for the position.
I do.
Okay, then I guess we'll go into executive session. I don't know if we wanted, since Tess is here, to find out what the process is, 'cause that's what originally we were doing here.
Yeah, well, I did have someone in mind, and I wanted to talk about that and the process for that person, if the board agreed.
Okay.
So, I'll just go to public comment. Does anyone who would like to speak? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to enter into executive session.
I move we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seven-four-two-oh-six-one-A.
Second?
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.